Great, good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of Mashpee Public School Committee to order. Our first agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. The Mashpee Public Schools recognizes and honors the many generations of Wampanoag people who have lived and been sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. Okay, moving on, we're gonna ratify the agenda of August 17th.
Madam Vice Chair, would I move we ratify the agenda for August 17th, 2022? I'll second that.
Thank you. So, we'll take a vote.
Can I ask one question? Are you at all intending to shift tonight's date?
Um, I was gonna just touch on it really quickly. Nicole and I talked about it really quick, so I was just gonna briefly mention it, because that's why I was gonna read it. Yes, thank you. Uh, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes also. So, the agenda is ratified. Do we have anyone for public comment tonight?
Not at this time.
Nope, okay, thank you. Okay, now, this is a fun thing on the agenda. We get to welcome new team members of Mashpee Public Team Mashpee. So, who do we have tonight?
So, I just wanna say that we completed today was our second day of new employee orientation. Um, and I appreciate some of the members who were able to come tonight. Not everyone obviously is able to come, but I do wanna acknowledge the tribe. We had an outstanding half-day professional development yesterday afternoon. It was very informed and very well done and very much appreciated by everyone who's able to attend, which was our whole group. And then today as well, we did do the tour of the town. And we always end at the Polar Cayman. Just wanted to shout out to Mark Morris at the Polar Cayman's generosity. He came in, opened his shop just for us and obviously never wants any compensation for it. He says he does it from his heart.
And he scooped by himself.
He scooped by himself and I said to Hope, is this in normal sense? Because it was giant.
Oh, Nicole, in case you watch later, it was ginorgous.
He does give pretty little abortions, honestly.
Really? But he scooped like 24 of us in record time, I would say.
So, just before they introduce themselves, we have about, well, my favorite. As of today, we have 32 new members of our team. A couple of those 32 were either long-term sub but not an official member of the team. And then a couple of people like to switch from food services into a role. But 32, 32 new members, and we still are working on nine positions that we have to fill. But most of those are closing up and we seem to have a good plan in place to meet the deadline, which is obviously August 29th, when everyone returns. So, I will just invite the four fabulous people, five fabulous people who are here. They're gonna say their name, their school that they are going to be working at, and what they want to be doing.
Feel free to take the mic.
Come on.
Come on.
Take the mic and come along. Stand in an awkward line.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dan Case. I'll be teaching high school math. Nice to see you all.
Hi, everyone. I am Rachel Fordham, and I'll be in the middle-of-high school doing science. Welcome.
Good afternoon, evening. My name is John Foley. I will be at the Mashpee High School, and I'll be running the culinary department.
Welcome.
And to be fair, John did ask if he needed to bring treats tonight. I said we could table that for another meeting, maybe in the winter, something nice and toasty.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nick Simalardis. I'm gonna be the eighth grade teacher. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Peter Saltzman, and I'm gonna be a science teacher at the middle-of-high school, teaching physics, astronomy, and other subjects.
Well, Peter, you got your sweatshirt.
Yes.
We went to the wear Mashpee store today, and he wanted to buy it, but I was like, dude, we got a deadline. We gotta... But he went back and got it. Looks fabulous.
It looks great.
It's a nice sweatshirt. Well, welcome, everyone. Um, I don't know, I'm, I don't know if you know or are familiar with who we are, but I'm Kathy Lewis, Vice Chair. Um, Brian?
I'm Brian Wiegand. I'm the secretary.
I'm Matthew Davis. I'm a plumber.
And Dawn's on her way. Nicole is off tonight, but you'll, you'll see her at some point as well as Dawn. So, welcome, and we're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today.
Excited to hear you.
All right. Nice being with you all.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. A little high representing.
Uh-oh, Mary Kate's gonna get back up.
Quashnet will help together. I promise I did not pay them.
That's exciting, so let's bring them. Yeah, moving on to the next agenda item, approval of the minutes of July 20th, 2022. Are there any changes anyone saw? I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll take a motion to approve the minutes for the July 20th, 2022.
You made a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So, Matt made the motion, Brian made the second, and Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Outstanding.
And I vote yes. Next up are the minutes of our August 9th retreat.
Madam Vice Chair, I move we approve the Mashpee Public School retreat minutes from August 9th, 2022.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Matt. Any discussion? Nope, okay. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Skeet, all right. So, now we are on to Superintendent DeBoer's report.
So, in terms of planning for 2022, 2023, this is a very busy couple of weeks. Uh, like I said, we did our orientation with all the employees on Tuesday and Wednesday. They have another day that is building-based next Monday. We have a meeting next Thursday, I believe, with our bus drivers and monitors. We do that annually to make sure we're all on the same page. Uh, next Friday, the 26th, is a staff with their families cookout. You've all been invited as well. That's on the field between the two schools. Um, in terms of convocation, the first day when all of our staff returns on the 29th, which is a Monday, all of you are invited. If you can stay the whole day, it's great. Um, it's 8:00 to 3:00. Um, my piece of convocation is basically like 8:15 to 9:15 with some of the speakers, 9:15 to 9:45. The tribal education department is presenting. Uh, there's a little break. And then 10:00 to 11:30 is Dr. Curly's Warneum. I'll send this up to you in a minute. And then we're doing a picture with the entire team. Uh, they're getting a new shirt this year in the gym. It would be awesome if you were there to be part of that photo. Lunch will be provided in, you know, by our food services department. And then the afternoon from 12:30 to 3 is working with the Mashpee Police Department with safety drills, Alice practice, and all of that, which I also think is a great opportunity if you'd like to join us. So, if you're able to set aside the entire day, then that would be, I think, great. Appreciated that you're there. The second day is building-based for teachers. There's a staff meeting at each building in the morning, probably not more than about 90 minutes. There may be a half-an-hour training, sort of self-guided through a program that Sean Maroney's created because we've switched platforms for our registering absences. And so, teachers are gonna need to know what buttons to click and how to do that. And then the balance of the day, we're trying to expand what we give them for time, recognizing that sort of, for me, it's trying to help teachers the most we can. Contractually, they are given a half-day to sort of work in their rooms, but we're trying to give them basically from 10 o'clock on to do that. Um, and then obviously, the kids come back, um, and they go to kindergarten on that first, on the Wednesday, which is the 31st. If you wanna be at any of the schools in the morning, that's a great time to see happy faces and sometimes anxious parents at the upper grades, but it's a great place to be. And you're always welcome to, you know, connect with me if you'd like to go through any of the schools or classrooms. I will give a shout-out to DPW. They have done an outstanding job. Our schools look amazing. I say this every summer, but I mean, right now, it's not so hot, but they worked through some sweltering conditions and continue to do, to do so. And when I talk to them during that real heatwave part, they won't really, you know, they don't like it, but they weren't complaining, and they won't, you know, they continue to work really hard. And so, through Catherine Laurent and Brad Tripp and all of that team, they've really done a great job for us. Um, Ashley can do an update on the field, but, um, you know, there's open houses. I think in your packet, you do have an upcoming events list, and we make sure we send something out to reinforce that for any events you'd like to come. I did share the district calendar with all of you, so if you did choose to put that on your phone, you can easily access on a daily basis if there's something going on.
Can you just add too, we're doing a substitute training tomorrow.
Substitute.
All of our substitutes who work for us are coming in from 10:00 to 1:00 tomorrow to do training with me and Suzy Brooks and Maria Fisher, and Dr. Curly is helping out with that as well. I just wanted to add that.
Great.
So, that is the, we, uh, we only have two of our principals here. Uh, Dr. Boulard is a little under the weather, and I told her she might have to come. And Mr. Crane already had plans, so we'll do our best to fill you in on anything that will wait to come. Uh, Mary Kate, would you like to go first with a little update?
Sure.
Hi, everyone. It's nice to see you. Um, we're very excited. It's the floor in the gym is new along. They put another coat of paint on it today. There's been a little delay with the curtains and the scoreboards, but hopefully that will be coming along. But it's looking good. The bleachers are back in where the bleachers belong, and we're not gonna keep them in the front hall, so we're very excited about that. Um, so, that's great. Placement letters do get sent out to families on the 11th. Um, I have heard from a couple of families who have new addresses. So, families, if you have not received them, please call the office and let us know of those new addresses because they could be sitting there somewhere. Um, currently, we have processed 30 students, whether they're coming or going. Seven withdrawals total at this point. We have 23 new enrollments, and out of that, 11 are complete and 12 are still pending. So, we're hoping to get that paperwork done and ready to get those students placed. But it's pretty much a consistent number in that 30 range, maybe 30 to 35 students coming and going. But certainly, many less going than coming this year, so that's good. We're anxious to welcome all those kids back. And, um, we also have quite a few new staff members, and it was great to welcome them today. And they're going to come back on the 22nd and do some building-based activities with us, so that will also be really great. And from a wide variety and ranges of places that the staff, new staff will be coming from. So, I think that will really help to add to our school community. So, that's good.
Do you have a transition, any transition activities you have with the students?
Oh, yes, we do. Yes. Thank you, Superintendent DeBoer. We do, grade three students, we will be having our scavenger hunts actually tomorrow and on Friday. And those invitations have gone out. It's also on social media. So, um, we're really looking forward to welcoming those third graders. They absolutely love it. Will go all around the school. We will not go into the gym. We'll just go to the door of the gym. But they get very excited, and it's a nice way to just see the classroom, see the school. They know where the buses are gonna be, where a parent drop-off is, and just answer all those questions that they have coming into the new learning environment. So, it's a really great tradition, I think, and it really helps the third graders feel good. They do have their lanyards that were also sent home along with those placement letters, and their lanyards match their teachers, so they're easily spotted, identified. You're over here and you're over there, which is always the biggest fear, I think, for our students. Am I going to get lost? But I think we always have all hands on deck, and we'll make sure that, that the students are set. But those scavenger hunts are tomorrow and Friday, so we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Are lockers gonna be used again this year? Are we gonna go back to locker use?
Yes, students will be using lockers. Those are assigned by the teachers. We give the teachers a bank of lockers, and then they'll assign them to the kids. But yes, definitely, they can use their lockers this year, which is, we're back in business.
It's funny to hear you say that.
Yes, yes, yes. Absolutely. And I know that is one of the biggest things that our third graders really look forward to. They're very excited to get a locker. That's all of their hope. But they are narrow, so we don't want rolling backpacks or big binders, but definitely, they will have that. Yes, and it's great to be able to offer the universal lunch for students, too. I think families are pleased. We, um, just a little plug to Kiwanis and several of our other community partners, that we do have backpacks here in the building, and if anyone is in need of any of that type of support, we will have that available to families as well.
And if, I, one last question, too, just 'cause I saw the question come up a couple of times. If people do want to donate supplies to the school, do they go to the superintendent's office, or should they go directly to you?
They generally do go to the superintendent's office. They want to make sure they have to donate.
But I've noticed that's been coming up in a couple of different places on social media. And I've seen Barry answer, and I was like, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We never like to turn anyone down. It does only give donation to the school and...
Okay, and just again, if you wanted to clarify where they should go.
We are also starting up our Cape Kid Meals program again, and that will start in the beginning of the year. And I don't know if I shared at the last school committee meeting about this, but the Mashpee Fire Department, Firefighters Union, they donated $1,500 to Quashnet's Cape Kid Meals. So, that funds 10 schoolchildren for the entire year for supplemental food, which is really terrific. So, we're so appreciative of those Mashpee firefighters. They're just, it's a great partnership. And Kiwanis has always been generous with that, too. But we will be soliciting people who might need that support and to just certainly let the school know, either Quashnet or Coombs, either school, they can contact Dr. Boulard directly or myself, and we'll make sure that they get that supplemental food program for the weekend.
Can I add something to that? So, is that okay?
Yeah.
Um, or I should share, I'm sorry. So, I just recently joined the board of Cape Kid Meals, um, which I have to say was, um, I, I, it was more interviews than I think I had for getting this job, to jump on this board, this volunteer board. Um, but it was a great opportunity, I think, for us to give back and support what Mary Kate and Deb have been doing for years now, which is provide those supplemental meals for kids. But one of the things I wanna mention is that one of the reasons they want someone from the school on the board is because they're looking to expand offering those supplemental meals to the middle-high school-age kids. Because it gets a little bit more difficult as they get older for kids to accept those, to take them home. So, one of the things we'll be doing this year, working with Dr. Monette, is hopefully doing some pilots at the middle-school level to see if we can come up with a good system that gets the food in the hands of the kids in a way that is honoring to them and not embarrassing or, um... So, just keeping that in mind, that's something we're moving forward with.
Excellent.
Sorry, Mrs. Brian.
No, that's fine. And we have been fortunate that some of the students that participate at our level, when they, if they have younger siblings, we allow younger siblings to help with that because it's not so much...
No, sixth grade even, it's...
Thank you.
So, absolutely, thank you.
I'm a little nervous. My first time. Hi, everyone. Um, I just wanna say before I start, like, just between, I've had a moment today. Jamie and I just did a big walk around the school. And between the leadership week last month and the last two days, it's been so... Just to see these new teachers so excited and just hearing the comments on the bus ride, and like you guys kept saying, connected community. And like yesterday with the Wampanoag Tribe, it has been such an amazing two months, so I thank you. Like, thank you. Seriously, like, you just feel like you're part of something. And you guys kept saying, connected community, and you truly feel that, like, I can't wait to get started. I cannot wait to see kids come through the door. Um, I don't have a lot of updates, other than we're moving fast and furious trying to fill positions. Um, I think we're almost there. Um, the turf field looks great. Every time I pull in, I'm like super excited about that. Um, the front office looks great. We're doing Jump Start next week on Tuesday, and I'm excited about that. That's, seventh graders are like my, my love, my range of the strange little beasts. I can't wait to meet them. Um, I'm just excited to get started. I feel like teachers are floating through. I'm meeting new teachers coming in every day. Um, I've hit the ground. I'm, I'm ready to be back. Like, I feel like educators, once August hits, we're back and ready to go, and there's a lot going on. Um, I have a lot to learn. I'm meeting with Lindsay Cat tomorrow to just go over the final schedule, and we're waiting for that last position before we completely finalize it. She sent me the homeroom list. We're looking at teacher duties, nailing all of that down. And then I have to spend some time with the deans, just so we can, so the three of us can kind of focus on our vision, and so I can kind of lay out what my plan is for the year. Do you have any questions?
I, can I just ask a question? Yeah, I don't know if you know the answer to it. Do you know when families will get schedules?
26th.
August 26th.
August 26th, we're rolling.
Thank you.
That'll be your power school.
That's your power school. Yes. So, those are the things I have to ask Lindsay. Like I said to these ladies yesterday, I'm like, I need a punch list because I feel like I don't know what I don't know, and I, there's constantly in my head, like, I feel like I'm missing something, and like, I'm ready to just get started in my own routine. So, I feel like now we're, we're lining things up. I think Jump Start's gonna be my Jump Start, to just see kids and see students, and so... It was great yesterday. I, just, today was great. Brian, it was awesome. Like, I just feel like this has been so educational to me, just to see how Mashpee, like, these new teachers were just... It was just great to just hear the comments and to see them so excited. This one guy kept going, like, I'm pinching myself. This is unbelievable. Do you know any people that wanna teach English? If you see me on the comments holding a sign, that's me. I need an English teacher. Anything else? Thanks.
Thank you.
And other than with speaking with Dr. Boulard, the home is, particularly kindergarten, is hitting about what we estimated, so it's probably around a little under a hundred, which is supposed to be what it was last year. So, that's probably what we look at. The four-year-old program, to me, seems a little lower than it was in past years, but the three-year-old program is pretty robust for the moment as well. But we still have time, and sometimes those thoughts don't start coming out quite that easily sometimes. So, you have on page four is the sort of detailed personal update. I believe I shared this electronically, so that as we update, um, you have one date for 15th. We had an update, you know, for the 17th as well. But on the back of that, you can see the unfilled positions that we have right now and that we're working on. And, but, and many of those have, are people getting ready to come see you over the next two days, so it's not like there's no, no way that I plan to put that. Okay, next is the parents' student books, and I know, you know, what I sent you yesterday was a pretty bulky file, I think, of, uh, papers, and you have them in front of you as well. What I was going to do, so what you have, what you have in your packet is each principal's summary of changes, the charts that you're used to seeing. And then you also have the actual handbooks that have incorporated these suggested changes. Um, I wanted to go over one, sort of summary sheet that you also have, and it's titled at the top. It's not in the packet, I don't think. It was a handout. The SY 22, 23 MPS parents' student handbooks. These were sort of universal changes. It looks like this. It was clipped. Yes. So, in, when we started to work with the handbooks, the principals did some work first, but we had a larger leadership meeting on July 20th, which had all department heads, a lot of high school, middle-high school representatives, as well as our new grade-level leaders and elementary, and specific areas of the handbook that seemed to come up a lot during the school year, like, you know, was maybe presented some challenges or what we focused on. So, this document represented input from not just an administrative leadership team, it was a broader group of people. So, dress and personal appearance, this is the same in all schools, except that hats are not allowed at KCC and QS, but this year at MMHS, hats are allowed. Hoods are not, but hats are allowed. So, that's sort of a way, um, sort of for Dr. Monette to ease in as well, but, um, giving something to the kids. They do like to wear their hats, but hoods do present some problems at times, particularly figuring out whose school. So, that's sort of the biggest change in that. But some, we were cleaning up language. Eventually, we'd like to get sort of one parents' student handbook with maybe smaller sections that are specific to each school, but, you know, these three of them are very similar, too. Then we did the section on cell phones, personal electronic devices. And, um, you see one for MMHS, which is in the first section, and then there is a separate one that applies to Coombs and Quashnet. And, um, what we're really trying to do here is, you know, bring back the focus on learning and a little less multitasking because our students think that they're, they can handle both, and they really can't. Not like most of us can. So, the idea is that we're not making them put their cell phones in a pouch or in a special, you know, locked pouch that some school districts are using. Students at the middle-high school are permitted to use their cell phones in the cafeteria during breakfast and lunch. They are permitted to use their cell phones in the hallways during passing periods, which is four minutes in between classes. Um, they have to silence their cellphone and stow it away during all classes, whether it's in a backpack, a purse, or inside a classroom in a hot holder, because we do have those. The only exception would be if the teacher approves the use of a cellphone for a limited period for a specific classroom instructional academic purpose, and if the teacher has incorporated their use into the day, the day's lesson. So, there's sort of control conditions. Students are not allowed to take photographs or videos using their cell phones at any time during the school day unless they're directed to do so by a teacher. So, some of the filled classes, sometimes those teachers might direct that, but generally, it's not gonna be allowed. And then phone calls and text messaging should not be taking place in classrooms. Should these occur, the cellphone may be confiscated. It may require parental pickup. My messaging out to families, and I know we're in a different world than we might have been many years ago, where we have an office phone, but a lot of what interrupts, not lot, but significant amount, of texting that students receive from their parents, which really is sending a mixed message of what they're there for and important. So, a student could text their parent during that four-minute break between classes. They really should not be texting a parent. And if it's an emergency, we have plenty of phones and people to answer phones to get messages. On the back of that, the headphones and earbuds are not permitted to be used in school, in a school setting during the school day. Only exception again is if the teacher approves the use of headphones or earbuds for a limited time. Sometimes it could be a testing opportunity or actually, um, an assessment that they're taking online that those would be allowed, but otherwise, they're not. That, to me, is a big safety issue as well because so many kids last year, even prior to that, too, walk around with an earbud in or two, and I could say something to them in the hall. They don't respond because they can't hear. They're not... So, unless they have a visual of me in an emergency, what, how are they gonna respond in, in a quick way? And then the last piece was that smartwatches are expected to be turned off during all classes. So, because we know that we can pretty much do anything on that smartwatch, as you can do on a cellphone. So, that's the high school, and then there's some specific, um, you know, results of disciplinary action. But obviously, the Coombs School and the Quashnet School do not have that same sort of independent usage going on, and those, I wouldn't say they're more compliant students, but generally, it's not a problem where your kids are texting. But we wanna be very clear about not using a cellphone during class. And again, the headphones and earbuds is the same as the middle-high school, and the smartwatches is the same. So, I will, you know, what we, what we have, we will emphasize is principals as well, the messaging to parents. Because like I said, oftentimes, it's a text from a parent or something that didn't happen. So, that is related to that. And then the code of conduct is currently the same in all schools. Um, we just tweaked a little bit of it. We also had the, um, one of the attorneys that works for us. We do it again, and so, not too many changes. The only part was really making sure we've designated that you would do it, you could do an emergency temporary ruleable, but it has to have a hearing. You can't just say we're suspending a student. There has to be this process to it. And so, that's noted in, um, all of the sections where it would apply. And then the only difference for, um, is there's a little bit of an extra piece on there under discipline, the last section on additional standard of conduct for academic integrity at Quashnet and MMHS. So, I believe that was in MMHS before, except for the red warning. I don't believe it was, it's a new addition to Quashnet. Yes. And then the last sort of universal change had to do with the attendance section, which is the last one here. And, um, again, when we looked at all three books with this large, they weren't the same, and the language should be the same. And so, basically, what we've done is made them match up. And then the high school, um, not shown here, but in their book, they have a little bit more specific to their courses and targeting accesses and credit once you get to grade nine, but that was only in their book. But that was only in their book. So I don't know if you have any questions, and if you've looked at their chart, any of the changes other than these are really minor. They all have a little change in their health section because of. Input from Nurse Stacy in terms of cough drops.
So the only question I had, and this is probably just a nuance, is in regard to the smartwatches and. Blackest state of the day, expected to be turned off during all classes.
Actually, that's not, that was not the final wording.
It's not.
No, let me, let me.
I, yeah, when you just said that too, I was like, I don't.
No, that's not the wording we ended up with. It had to be, you cannot actively engage.
You can't interact or you can't.
Interact. Let me find it. It doesn't, I think it's in.
Actively interact with your smartwatch.
Let me look at that middle high school's book, because. No, that, that would not, that's not gonna work, so.
I would say that.
No, I just.
Yeah, I don't know why, I should have picked it up. And that was actually something that we worked smithed around as well, so let me find that one.
Because I think the two leaves of functions are the texting, where you.
Yes.
And the phone functions.
Okay, so the way, the way it is in the books, that error says, high school, page thirty. It says, active engagement with a smartwatch during class time is prohibited. So you don't have to, so it means like, so page thirty of the M M H S book. It's.
Active engagement.
With a smartwatch during class time is prohibited. So you could have it on.
So if I look at my, if I look at my watch.
That's not active engagement.
Yeah, active engagement is like.
You press a button.
Yeah, these kids are.
They're sitting there.
You're like scrolling.
You can, you can like type messages on your watch, yeah, so.
You can take pictures from your watch. You can do all kinds of stuff.
You're like.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You just have to put your phone somewhere and then you push the button on your watch.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Video.
Like, so I know, yeah, because if I do click it, I get my time.
If your phone is up, it's sitting like, so you have it sitting like this, you can use your phone to like take pictures while, you know, like you could aim it.
I just want a voice application stuff now too, that could be disruptive in classroom, because somebody just hit the. Hey, I'll meet you after school and like, you know, then it's like, what's going on, like, then go to the classroom, you know. Don't need that.
So it's, it's active engagement with a cellphone. It's the final wording that's in all three.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, thank you for bringing that up, like, whatever version of this I must have got.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
So. Explain to me why hats are not allowed at K C C at Quashnet, but they are allowed at M M H at the high school. What, why are we differentiating between the school?
So we, I speak to the high school of why yes, and then Mary Kate can do, can explain the why no. Is that okay?
Well, let's say, what is a hat? There are many different types of hats, and it's also a distraction in the classroom. At this level, the students, we're not talking just, it's any kind of hat. They want to be able to see and recognize all students in the building, and there are a variety of hats, and what does that look like? But it really, to me, it comes down to a safety issue of making sure we can recognize all students quickly in the hallways, in cafeteria. Around the building. Outside is different. They can wear sunglasses outside and a hat outside, but not in the building.
So what, I just want to explain the safety issue is not, not important at the high school. It is, which is why I was going to explain why we were doing the high school first.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Last year, the kids were allowed to wear hats and hoods, and that was spoken to Mrs. DeBora and I. Very vehemently when we started up there. Why can't we wear them? It doesn't make sense. And we shifted when we got up there, and they were allowed to. And so.
But that was post-COVID, in terms of getting everyone to feel comfortable being that set.
But also because they made some really good points about whose, whose traditions are we honoring? By saying no hats in the, in the, in the school. It's, it's respectful to some, in some cultures, it doesn't matter. So it was something we spent a lot of time talking about and thinking about last year, and so in moving forward, we don't want to take all of that autonomy away from the kids. So the hats, we can still see the kids on the cameras with the hats. You can see if they have earbuds in. The hoods is really more of a safety issue. And so that's why I think the, the compromise was, was made to continue to let the older kids wear the hats. And not so much the younger kids whose frontal lobes aren't quite as developed as the older kids, although those, those still aren't finished yet. Does that help?
Well, I was with you, except for your argument that's from a cultural standpoint, because then, when does culture kick in? Does it kick in a lot when they get to be in high school?
No.
Or is it throughout the entire experience?
But it's, it's student voice. It's that the students made a plea to us, a really well-established and thought-out plea. And it was the older kids that did that. Mrs. O'Brien does not have kids coming to her office saying, I want to wear a hat or I want to wear a hood. It's not happening here. They don't care.
It's a different level.
So it's really listening to the students and trying to accommodate their needs, and that is not a need down here that we are seeing.
It's not being, it's not a need that's expressed.
Correct. Or even though tried, like, we don't have kids coming in and keeping their hats on to see if they can get away with it here either. Which is what you do see at the high school, if even, and they express it. Does that make sense? You don't have to agree, but does it make sense?
So I, I, I combine the argument that we're doing it because the kids asked for it or accompanied, of course. That would be a sense. The other argument from a cultural tradition, I don't, I don't claim ignorance, I don't know how that plays out. But if that's, if that's irrational, then I don't understand.
I'm not talking about wampadad, I want to be clear. I'm just talking about lots of cultures that are.
I don't know what culture you're talking about.
So, okay, so then let's eliminate that argument right now, because there is one that you feel comfortable with.
There is, but you turn up the arguments, your statement, putting that out there, and so I, I'm only questioning. If that's a rationale, how does that?
Because it's not expressed at the, at the elementary schools, and it has been expressed at the middle high schools.
Because the kids are, are able to articulate versus.
That's your assumption. I, I don't know why. I think kids go to Mrs. O'Brien and want a student council here. They want a pride week. Like, they want a lot of things here at the, at the Quashnet that they'll go and ask her for, so. I, I think neither one of us can determine what the kids actually want unless we think, we ask that.
All right.
So it's not so much cultural as a student place, is what.
Well, and I think years ago, whatever, whatever the history of it, sort of in. A white culture of, there's always been this, well, wearing a hat indoors is a sign of disrespect. Who says that? Like, starting to sort of really think about things and, and maybe not, you know, totally fixing things, but. You know, you start to think, well, who said that way that way? Why is that?
And religious head coverings are exempt, obviously, from.
Absolutely, of course. Yes.
So.
Absolutely.
So that covers, that covers that cultural aspect.
Right, and there's still, as I understand it, assumptions to that.
Yeah, the, you know.
And there are could be I E T rules, there could be five oh fours that speak specifically to that, for sure.
You have to like, wear a, like, that special position.
If you wear a cheese hat, is that a cheese hat?
Well, I have to cover up, you know, so that there's not glitter on the top of your crumdom and, you know.
Ask my husband.
Or my wife. All right. Thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions before I enter team motion to approve these handbook changes?
No, I'm fine. I'm good too.
Then I will take a motion.
I'm motioning that we approve the respective changes submitted for FY twenty-two, twenty, well, FY twenty-three. For each of the schools, for Casey Coombs, Quashnet, and Mashpee Middle High School.
Okay, thank you, Don.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Matt. Any discussion? Okay, Matt, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Thank you.
And on page twelve, you have a list of upcoming events that takes you through September thirtieth. Again, these are all on that calendar that we shared with you, but. I thought it was somewhere, you are welcome to attend any of our open houses. We will have tables that are open house. The tribe is going to have a table at all three open houses. Evan Layer with his local community has a plan is going to have a table. Usually, boy scouts, girl scouts have tables, so if anyone else is interested in sort of. Walking some resources to our parents, it's a good opportunity to. Divide that, weigh up the volumes, but for some like that, a lot of people.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for, so we can do it for? Yeah. Thank you for all of that information. And looks like I've made some time off, Ashley, so now it's on you to keep us.
Rolling forward.
I actually have quite a few items tonight, so it's gonna be a little bit slurry normal.
Okay.
But the first part of my packet is the last section, all the way to the back, it's clipped together. It starts with this, yeah. So the first page is the FY twenty-two closeout. It's the same one you saw during the retreat there in the Gage do that. You go to the next page, there's a memo that we discussed during the retreat articulating where the items were, the turnback, specifically in salaries. So as I discussed during the retreat, we did not fill the reading specialist in FY twenty-two, so there's a $75,000 savings there. We did receive a grant, which was $100,000. There was extracurricular and athletic salaries that were not expensed in FY twenty-two. The substitutes, we didn't spend a full amount in salary lines. And then, as again, we discussed on the retreat, there were a lot of retirements and turnover in last year that caused a significant savings in FY twenty-two. We don't see that going forward in FY twenty-three, and we also did have that $400,000 reduction from the town, and that's all been sold in FY twenty-three. On the next page, are the FY twenty-two closeout budget transfers? I need a vote for this. You didn't see these during the retreat last year.
I have a question before we move on. So we didn't fill the reading specialist last year? Does that suggest being a little bit of a issue?
Yes.
It has.
It was actually the literacy coach.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, because we did have reading specialists last year, but the literacy coach is what we had budgeted for and didn't fill, but we are very excited to have Dr. Ally Cohane. As our literacy coach, starting in the fall.
Any other questions? All of us, the corrections forward?
Um, one other question. So the extracurricular athletic salaries, is that because we had less done for activities last year?
So I think it was just the fact that we had budgeted for step three, and we had some turnover, new coaches to take in at step one, things of that nature, just really. The major COVID and new people filling positions.
Cause turnover versus.
Lack of, and that's.
Lack.
Yep.
Although I do think the after-school offerings at Mashpee Middle High School particularly were a little less because we did have, we did have like, that's like. Things that those extracurricular stipends might not have gotten access to as well.
Has that been added this year?
They're always in there.
Yes.
And the late bus?
Yeah, it was there last year. We couldn't fill out.
No, they were, they struggled to get a restaurant or a late bus because it's. Place would be elementary run or working.
And as of right now, we do not have a late bus on the way for the middle high school this year. We don't have the drivers to support them.
But it's budgeted in.
Yes.
Yes.
So on to the transfer plus. Does that one have any questions on it?
They're the same as you already seen. I just leave a vote for the committee.
If no one has any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve change for twenty-two dash thirty. Or it's seventy-one six forty-six. For $471,000, so $76,000. For, for the detail.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Matt. Any discussion? Okay, Matt, let's take a vote. Matt?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I also would guess.
Uh, the next item is the update to FY twenty-three budget actual as of this week. It's a slow start. We're incorporating things for the school year. Do you have any questions? There's not much to note at this point. I'll keep you updated. The next item is the FY twenty-three school lunch prices. So I just want to give you a little bit of background on this. As you all know, there's going to be universal lunch in Massachusetts for the third year, which is. Great for all families and all students. Everyone will receive breakfast and lunch options if they see fit. But I do want you to, everyone to understand that it's universal lunch in Massachusetts, so the National School Lunch Program is not offering universal lunch this year. And Massachusetts is supplementing the cost of it. So in order to be in compliance, you probably saw an email from the service director, Kevin, about the free reduced application. That is something that we do need families to fill out and return to us. It keeps us eligible for P D D T benefits and serves the families most effectively in our district. So for years to come, that's important information for us. Another item that we need to do to be in compliance is we need to increase our lunch prices. Again, it's universal, so students will receive a free lunch in school, but. We have to abide by increasing prices every year and meeting the threshold from the National School Lunch Program. So we did go through an audit this year. This was something that they gave back and told us that we have to use the tool. There's a statewide tool that's given to us in the, entering the information about. What our school lunch price was and all the revenue that we received, and averages it out. So as you can see in this memo, we requested a 25 cent increase at each level to give us the required, we had averaged at $3.36. That's the state standard, and I need a vote on this from the committee to be able to move forward.
Any other questions?
Um, just sort of compare. It seems like it's basically like they have to do this because eventually Massachusetts may not be supplementing this. We need to have that kind of data so we can kind of go, okay, so now this is what it's going to cost per lunch and per, like. Anything the state may give us back if, like, you know, we did have, like, you know, students that really need, right?
Exactly. So it also lets the committee see year-over-year where our, our lunch prices should be. So if we do go back to students getting their lunch at some point, it's not going to be a $3 increase. You see the incremental change year-over-year.
Brian, Don, any questions?
So even with this increase in price, the state will fully reverses that, correct?
Yes. This is just an appliance exercise.
Right. And this will also cover, ultimately cover the cost of services?
No, so the, so we're going to be going back to a full food service model this year. Last year, we did diet lunches. This year, we're going to be offering all apart options. So again, it's a universal lunch for lunch and breakfast that's offered to every student, but let's say your student comes to school and wants a slice of pizza at the high school that's offered all apart. They'd have to pay for that item. That's not included in the universal, universal meal. A universal meal is the full meal that has all components that's reversible through the federal government and the state. Does that make sense?
So. Let me rephrase one minute. At the high school, if it's pizza day, I can go in and get pizza and whatever else is on that plate. Eat the pizza and throw the rest away and not be used. But if I went in and just bought the pizza à la carte that day, I'd have to pay. Is that correct? But if I went in and just bought the pizza à la carte that day, I'd have to pay, is that correct?
Yes.
If it's pizza day as a main meal.
Yeah, like on the schedule, like they'll, I like the schedule that this day of the week they got.
But let's say you go on Monday and it's a ham and cheese sandwich.
But you want?
And you got the whole meal, but you also wanted a slice of pizza, you still have to pay for that slice of pizza. So it's any à la carte item, let's say a student wants to go buy a bag of chips, they can pay for that à la carte, and so. What we have to remember about the food service program in our schools is that it needs to operate in the black rate, so there aren't generating services, every student again gets a full meal which has all the components. That's prescribed by the state, federal government, and those are reimbursable meals, but those à la carte meals are kind of where the, the program generates the most revenue.
Ashley, can I ask a question? So if the menu says ham and cheese, is there still the sandwich option for kids? Or like, is it, you have to take what was written on there, because in other words, you could get turkey, or you could get sun butter, or you could get what was on the menu?
Right, so it's the reimbursal meal for that day, whatever it is for that day.
So not the sandwich options for like vegetarians or things like that?
So again, so if it's like a sun butter?
Yeah.
It falls under that category.
So whatever the meal was like last year is that, it's just if you go in and grab.
The way it was. Yes. Yes. That bag of chips or that, that, uh, that one off drink at the high school lunch, no school high school lunch.
Yes. So they still do have options done, if, if you were confused like I am.
So the approved menu will still have the two options every day of reimbursable, fully approved meal that sits under the guidelines, state and federal, is available as well as complete à la carte.
Exactly, it'll go back to what it was pre-COVID where there were many options offered to students.
I think that'll be confusing initially.
It.
Initially reimbursable, I think.
To, to parents who.
Yeah.
A hundred percent.
Who will have, have the headline that.
Yeah.
It's all free.
Free lunches.
And that's why we talk.
All of a sudden they find out that their kids are asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For money to be put on their cards or.
Yeah.
Schools calling and saying that their cards are deficits.
Yeah.
So it's very important, I, I believe as a finance person to call universal lunch, because that's what's being offered in Massachusetts. It's not free, quote unquote free, it's being reimbursed at the state level, and we're only one of five states to be doing this correctly.
So how are we communicating this to parents?
So.
Oh, my questions.
Massachusetts created a toolkit with messaging on social media and different memos that we can send out to families, so as we now ramp up. Families are used to getting communications again from Mashpee Public Schools, we'll be sending those out through the Food Service Director.
Will there be communications to the students as well, because I feel like a lot of the students might not totally, I, I just picture, let's say, a ninth grader walking up thinking, I get free lunch and start and, you know, I know they.
Well, we know that at Mashpee Middle High School, Dr. Monette will be doing grade level seminars with each group of students, that would be something that she can reinforce with them as well. We can send messages directly to them through the Chromebooks, but it'll be signage, there'll be lots of ways for them to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
I know.
I'm excited, Massachusetts did this and I read California went full tilt for permanent, like this is the permanent thing in Cal, they were the first ones, I think, that went permanent, yesterday they voted, I think.
And it's difficult, right, because the federal government's not quite there yet, they're not ready to make that change, so there are gonna be differences where there were not as many in the state level before.
I think this is great. Any other questions before we take a motion to vote on this? Hearing none, anyone would like to make a motion?
Matt, vice chair, I move we approve FY twenty three school lunch prices as presented. I'll second that.
Thank you, Brian and Matt. Any discussion? Hearing none, Matt, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Final piece for me today is a request for a vote on increased rates of pay for our substitutes, recess monitors and bus monitors for FY twenty three. The last documents and memo showing the rate increases, are there any questions?
So is this a daily rate?
Yes.
In all cases, including the bus monitors?
No, the bus monitors and recess monitors are an hourly rate.
Any more questions? Can we take a vote?
Uh, I do have a question, um, just in regard to, um.
Okay.
Recent discussions that we had of negotiation of something that in regard to minimum rates. Um. How did you land at the nineteen dollars and how did you?
We just were, we've been doing a dollar increase year over year, have that consistent.
But also looking at sort of the responsibilities of that role compared to some of the USC expectations, it's a little bit of a difference.
What is, so then our daily substitutes. Um. What does that equate to?
If you require a licensed daily sub, it is twenty dollars a ton.
That's the one forty that's used for substitutes days, seven hours.
Okay. If you're not licensed.
Just to buy it. Sixteen, seventeen. That's if you are not licensed, do not hold a bachelor's degree, if you have a bachelor's degree, it's eighteen, fifteen.
How do I square that? Which was responsible to. Say, Unit C member, and without a daily substance.
Well, the Unit C member is that long term connection and relationships, a daily sub in essence is there for one day. Obviously, hopefully building good relationships, but there's not that similar long term impact that you have if you work in their professional or administrative system. Those responsibilities in the substitute.
Responsibilities as well.
Mr. Pero?
Well, as a substitute, I mean, given that particular day you have, you are in charge of making sure you deliver the learning that is left by the instruction that is left by the teacher. So then, you know, it's, it's a part of position. You oversee the safety while being in, wanting to be students.
Right.
That we oversee the parent. They don't really oversee the parent particularly as a sub, because the areas generally work for a special ed teacher.
Oh, okay.
And not the classroom teacher. Or, or work for them.
Under the director.
Under the direction.
And. Did we have difficulty last year funding the substitutes?
We did, and it's a probably a combination of compensation and COVID. Like, Dr. Hansman said, so are there training for our substitutes, do you know how many are we're inviting to?
Uh, I wanna say forty three or whatever, I don't believe they can all make it. But I may have just completely made that number up, so I don't vote me too.
Well, just going by last year, we had quite a few individuals come to substitute training. But that's a, that's a way to know more about the substitute, so building substitutes during the year.
But we're constantly interviewing substitutes, I have three on my schedule to interview for next week. I would say in a regular year when I'm not at the high school, I interview maybe one substitute a week even, it might be as many as that, sometimes more.
And we tend to, mighters say, we tend to hire substitutes that then get repetitive assignments, is that correct?
They can pick their assignments, so they go in and they choose where they'd like to work, and many of them will choose the same teacher over and over. If there's someone out long term, a short term but long, you know, short term, long term, then we try and keep the same person in, in other words, if somebody's gonna be out for three weeks because of a medical issue, we usually try and put the same person in.
Yeah, I will defer to your judgment, but. I think we may have to do a little bit of that later on.
Kind of like a per diem though, I don't, I don't know that it would need to be like, I understand what your concern is, but I feel like it is definitely separate from what a Unit C employee. Because a substitute isn't necessarily guaranteed the work, like, like Dr. Hansman said, they are sometimes, you know, sometimes they're applying to multiple school districts and picking and choosing different things every day, so, you know.
And as a substitute, you, you do be able to sort of pick your week's schedule, I don't wanna work on Mondays, which air really can't do.
Yeah.
I just wanna do Tuesdays, Thursdays.
Or I don't wanna work kindergarten, I wanna work early, middle school and up.
Yeah, we can talk about that from my contract up there.
You can be all like.
No, but with that, you trade off things.
So it's not, I mean, and they're not getting benefits, they're not getting, it's really just a daily. So I think that's your, they're not a permanent fixture in the school, so I think that's. What kind of keeps it separate from what we're concerned like.
Well, no, I'm just, you know, if, if we're struggling to find qualified substitutes. Then, you know, one of the. Logical remedies is are we compensating them adequately in order to suffice them to come to Mashpee? I mean, it's the same argument that we use in, in other lines, and so I'm only just raising a question of, you know, particularly in today's environment where. You know, there, where employee, potential employees are making trade offs. And they're looking at, and that's because, hey, yeah, you're right, there are no ballots, what they're getting is a straight for being salary here, and, you know.
I don't think we're the only district though struggling to find superintendents, I wish that, or not superintendents. We're definitely not, you're not going in there. Um, substitutes.
So these are very competitive rates for substitutes, there's actually, came up today on the list sir, for business managers what rates are for other districts. Unfortunately, not a lot of Cape districts have put their information in on here, but looking across the state in general, these are very competitive. And because this is a topic of conversation, if we could approve these as they stand right now, if I see drastic differences in the weeks to come, I can bring back a different amount too.
That'd be all I have, thank you.
If there's no other comments, follow, take a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the rates of pay for substitutes recess monitors and bus monitors?
Hearing none.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion? Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Brian, this is thank you, Ashley. Okay. Really, really a hard question.
You don't say that you're a bad guy.
Great, um, so the next item, um, we touched upon at our, um, well, we, we mentioned it but didn't really get into it, and I don't think we're gonna get into it tonight, but I did wanna let the committee know that. Um, I would like to put together a presentation in the sense of like what our action steps as a committee will be in regard to the student advisory committee that we discussed. Um, I think there are certain things that we need to kind of have a plan of steps of what we need to do, how to work with Dr. Monette and the middle high school to figure out how to organize. This advisory committee, um, and then maybe at our next meeting have a little bit more in-depth discussion about this, so I think if we, if everybody's okay with that, I think we could move it to. Next month's meeting with a little bit more in-depth, and then look at this student advisory committee and, um, student representative to the school committee. Anybody have any questions or comments on that?
The only, the only thing after I got, think about this after last week was just like, is this outside of like the student council, like it'd be a whole separate thing from that?
It depends, some schools do set it up as like their school senate slash student council, um.
Like it'd be a portion of like, it could be like a subcommittee of their council.
No, it is not a subcommittee of student council.
It'd be, it'd be edited, okay, gotcha.
It.
Cool.
And would this person replace the, uh, student advisors that we've gone away out?
Theoretically, the way that the law is written is that what we currently have is not technically a student rep, it is like a liaison who talks to us and gives us updates. If we want to keep a liaison and not do the student advisory committee. We can, I personally really feel strongly about having a student advisory committee because I feel like it engages the students in a much more active way, it encourages civic engagement. I think it adds, and a stronger voice, so yeah, I would definitely, it's, it's, they would still give that liaison report, whoever the representative becomes, but yes.
Would we replace?
They would have, they would have to, whoever, you know, DeLeo, let's say, would have to run for the student advisory committee, get elected and then be appointed by that advisory committee to be the rep. And then she would stay through the meeting, be a non-voting member, um, but still have part in discussions and whatnot, so.
Thank you.
Be interesting to see that.
Yeah, so next month, if we could push that to, if everyone's okay with that, that is what it's, it's all, and I had kind of discussed doing, so you guys had a little bit more, something to digest and, and look at.
Can I, can I just comment? First of all, I'm, I'm one hundred percent on board with this idea, would you be willing to come in when we get this?
Yes, please.
Because you know the, I wanna say the legality of it, but I wanna make sure if we're doing this, starting right from the beginning.
I already had, that was an action step.
This is a huge.
But yes, I, I agree, I.
You know, it's nice to have a student sitting there and it's also a, it's a great resume builder for a high school student, like I just know former students that have sat in my previous district. You know, it's, it's pretty powerful to see them sitting there with their own nameplate and being a part of the school committee.
And asking questions to Ashley and like, they, they are going to be like a non-voting but delegating member of, or deliberating member rather, of the school committee, so. It's, and they can rotate through, like they don't have to be, it doesn't have to be just one appointed, they can decide to rotate through the five, there's lots of different ways to do it. And I think that's what I think is beneficial to it because it does increase student voice, which is one of our main goals for school committees, so that we chose as one of our goals, so.
Right, having the packet sent to them.
And then we would, and then our obligation to them is we need, oh, Ashley, go ahead, share.
What I was about to find with that was this, uh, school committee.
Right.
And you were found with students.
Student. She was?
She was, and did you, and you met with the school, so the other thing is on our end, we have to have a full committee meeting with them every other month, like the entire advisory committee, that's the only other thing. That we would need to look at, how we figure that part out, but. We have to have a, they have to be, it says.
Can they come and have it be a portion of that month's meeting every other month here and an agenda item?
Well, see, they set the agenda, the advisory committee sets the agenda, we do not set that agenda, but it is a public meeting with the school committee, but we would work with them, but they would pretty much set the agenda. But they would pretty much set the agenda, is my understanding of it, and then we meet with the advisory committee jointly to kind of go through what their agenda items are and kind of, again, increase that student voice of what they see as the school committee needing to address from their perspective. So it, it really does build up not just the student voice, but a sense of civic engagement, which I personally feel is important. And I know Mashpee does a pretty good job of that, I think, because, you know, take it one step further. Um so that's kind of.
I'm wondering, like, if you create the every other month, if there's a way for it to start at five, and so from five to five thirty, is that joint meeting
Yeah.
Yeah.
off of an agenda that they've created moving into regular meeting at five thirty?
Yes. Yeah. I think that would most likely be doable. I'll look into that though and find out. Um.
Okay, yeah.
But, okay.
Do we need a uh official motion to table or can we just assume that the superintendent and the chair will place on the agenda for the next meeting?
Any?
It's already.
Sure is good.
I don't know the rules.
Yeah, I don't know that we need a motion that's just gonna be continued to the next meeting, so that's.
For for me, that's.
The standing item at the moment, I think. Um alright, on to business. Uh the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school committee goals, which is page twelve of our packets. We went over this at our retreat. Uh this looks like our, right now, kind of what we discussed. Does anybody have any questions about what our goals are for this year? We basically said that during the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, the school committee will monitor, evaluate and support the implementation of the Mashpee Public Schools Plan for Success, year two of the plan. Our action steps will plan for success pillar two, which is diversity, equity and inclusion, um which we're going to focus on initiatives two point two, two point four and two point six. I can read those out if anyone wants, but um those are available online as well. Six, Tom?
As I recall, we had some discussion regarding to two point four, in regard to what the committee would be responsible for doing, in regard to creating and providing programming. Can you please refresh my memory?
So you're, you were wondering, we talked about how we were going to do.
How we be as a committee create program?
No, that's a good point. I'm not remembering that one. Off the top of my head. I mean, you could change the, those two create, provide verbs to something else. We did, I did change on two point six from your perspective. I put that you would participate in training designed to ensure a district-wide culture of diversity, equity and inclusion, where the actual pillar, I think, is not participate. I think it's like, I don't have it from me. Um. So if you want, you know, it's uh.
Cause it's really the representation, you know, the responsible for.
I mean, we do. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the budget that you support, right.
Creating, um.
So ensure funding is provided to create programming?
When we had talked about this at the retreat, I think that we were under the assumption that we would continue to um provide the information of the programs to the superintendent um and the administration, cause I think that was after we had talked about um different programs that we might do, whether it's through the tribe or going to the conferences that we go to and seeing some of the workshops that we'd like to want to implement some of those.
So provide information on programming opportunities?
That makes more sense, provide the information.
Yeah, and I think that's just the way that it's
Yep.
um drafted in the actual Plan for Success, so.
Yeah, so provide programming opportunity, provide information on programming opportunities that honor.
Which thing, which uh one is it? Two point six?
Two point four.
Two point one.
Oh, two point four, create? I uh pulled it up. Create and provide programming that honors the diversity represented in our community and beyond.
Yes. Yeah, so we'll, we'll just change it to provide information on programming.
Opportunities or what options are?
I don't think we have to use more, but I think I should throw that. Uh our second action step was Plan for Success Pillar Three under Teaching and Learning Initiative three point three, participate in relevant staff professional development. And step three was Plan for Success Pillar Four, Mashpee Connected Community Initiative four point two, renew and cultivate community partnerships with the intention of improving outcomes for all stakeholders. And then under that, we said, members will attend community and school events and we've all been provided access to the district calendar of events. And if you would not, please let someone know so that you can be added.
I would add, yes, if you can see the email box. Then also, just as a reminder, it's linked here, but I'll resend it. It's a data collection sheet where basically it is like page two of last year, so you have to flip to the next page to make uh it's a Google sheet, but each of the initiatives is across the top, so if you do something, you know, just go in, date, put what you did, and that's a way to sort of collect memories on any of those. It's pretty easy to do.
So other than the change to action step one B regarding initiative two point four, are there any other changes we need to make to this or does this look good?
Would you entertain a motion?
I move we approve the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school committee goals as presented with the edits to action step one, section B, um initiative two point four as um presented.
Ryan?
So.
Thank you, Don. Any discussion? Hearing none. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so congratulations, we have some goals. I'll fix that to make sure you get the updates. Thank you. I don't believe there are any items that shared or not known reasonably in this year, so.
I do have one item to share. So, um the negotiation subcommittee met the other day, uh with C, um we leave subcommittee
Yes.
see the final draft and.
That's gone out, that went out yesterday to Sarah and she shared it, um I think this morning, she said she shared it with, yeah, Jen.
Can you go out? Okay. Subcommittee, if I give final draft, um it will be by localities, uh because we have, um we showed a wonderful conclusion, um with the negotiations and all the, want to present that to the school committee. And then I asked the question of the, uh if the school committee, if we wish to have that ratified prior to the new school, then you'll have to schedule the school meeting to address that prior to the new school.
Which you could do through the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So what, so the document that went to them is, um shows anything that was being crossed out and anything new. And then once they confirm that everything has been captured correctly, obviously all of the um, you know, crossed out language goes through the file document um to make sure they can have access to that. So.
Well, so it's good.
Here's actually.
That's true.
And it has to get ratified, I think.
They have to ratify first, yeah.
No, they they need that, they need to, hopefully.
Yeah, I mean, we're obviously down to the crunch time because it affects the first two days of school, having professionals and advice letters for every member who has had to go out, so there's a lot that has to be done.
But we're up to the challenge.
Yes, we are.
So you'll send out dates, does anybody have a date in mind already that works for the meeting or?
It would be tentative, for sure.
Yes, definitely. I'm talking next week.
Yes. Depending on time, it's not like we get nine o'clock. Yeah, Matt can't go on. Yeah, if there's something I have, I'll be okay. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so Matt can't go on any of this.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, or you can.
It's all that's in the business, yeah.
In my perfect world, I would like to shoot for something on the twenty-fourth, but I have no idea when you have it.
Okay.
How do you get that? That's very.
Yeah, I don't think we can schedule a date right now, until they ratify, and then we'll just do our best to get
Until they ratify, yeah.
The four to.
Alright, sounds good.
It just on a, it'll probably be a five-minute call.
Yep. Alright, so then everyone watch for that email. Can you even take? There anything else that anyone would like to bring up?
No, I'd just like to um thank you, um Madam Vice Chair for running the official.
In business, no? We're not done yet, we gotta check public comments. Is there any more, any public comment to add?
Well, actu- no, there isn't. I can walk over.
Alright, alright, we've dispensed with the agenda and our meeting is adjourned.